Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the April 24th meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission. Like to call us to order and start with a little housekeeping. If you have phones with you, please silence or turn them off so that we can hear the music outside. If you're here to speak on an item and are not the applicant, please fill out one of the forms outside and provide that information to Elena or Jared below. When that item comes up on the agenda, you'll be called to the podium at the appropriate time. Please come and give your name and address for the record. You'll have up to five minutes to speak. If you're here to speak on an item with a large number of people, we encourage you to elect a representative to share your group's concerns, and in those cases, some additional time will be allocated. Were several speakers on the same item heard? We just ask that you do your best to limit comments to concerns that we haven't heard yet. Please direct all your comments and questions to the commission, and if needed, we'll ask the applicant or staff to respond. And then finally, we just appreciate everyone's presence today and the time taken away from your commitments and other obligations, and we just ask for your cooperation in upholding the decorum of the meeting, and we ask that you don't speak from the audience, that you come to the mic when called upon. So thank you for your help with that, and we'll begin with the receipt of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to receive the minutes of April 10th, 2025.
A motion to receive the minutes from Commissioner Noble. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And the minutes are received. Continuance requests. We'll start with uncontested requests.
Item 16 is KC 7719, requested deferred to May 8th. Item 17, PUD 2057, deferred to May 8th. Item 18, KC 7692, has been withdrawn. And item 19, case PC 10950, has been withdrawn.
Is there anyone present wishing to be heard on any of those items? All right, seeing none, we're ready for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the continuance request as read.
A motion to approve the continuance requests. That's been seconded by Commissioner La Forge. Please cast your votes. Those are approved. Those continuance requests are approved. Any new requests?
I have no new requests.
All right. Then we move on to the consent docket. Just one note, I did have someone sign up to speak on an item on the consent docket, item number two. So I think we'll probably need to pull that, hear that individually. So the consent docket, do we need a motion to do that? Okay. So the consent docket is just item one.
Okay. Item one is KC 7728, final plat of Bison Creek, Section 3, located south of West Memorial Road and east of North Mustang Road.
All right. Anyone here to speak on that? All right, we're ready for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent docket.
A motion to approve the consent docket from Commissioner Noble. There we go. That's been seconded by Commissioner La Forge. Please cast your votes. And the consent docket is approved. Okay. Item, we're ready for item two.
Item two is KC 7731, final plat of Cality Cove, located south of East Hefner Road and east of North Post Road.
Mark Zizow, Johnson and Associates, 20 Sheridan Avenue. This is a final plat that conforms to the heavily negotiated preliminary plat. There were three TEs, two of them of the standard ones, but we agree with all of them. We're not asking for any variances, so we would ask for your approval today, but happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Pennington, this is your ward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I'd just love to hear from our neighbor about what the concern is.
All right. Mr. Bill McGoyne.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate Kamal Pennington on his election as our new representative of our Ward Seven. I can't think of a better man to stand up for us, and I appreciate it. I really appreciate you and your campaign, everything you've done. My question is, I have a question. I'm sure Mr. Zizow could answer it. He's been very forthcoming with us throughout this process. He's also been, he's listened, he's shown empathy, he has been compassionate and professional, and I feel like he stands out amongst the group representing the applicant. No doubt about it. But my question is, when is the flood study going to be done, or has it been done, number one? Because I didn't see anything on that, and I'd like to know a little bit about how it's done. Do they do it by map? Do they do it by aerial photographs from the past? Do they have a person comes out in the field and actually does the, you know, checks out the lay of the land and determines, you know, how things are going to go as far as flow of all that stuff coming out of the neighborhood? And that's really all I have to say. I appreciate you all listening to me throughout this process, and the only thing I would ask, and it's too late now, I know, but if I was moving into that neighborhood, I would not like it that my neighbor across the way has an acre and a half, and I only have an acre. But that's just me. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McGoyne.
Thank you, Mr. McGoyne. Should we hear from Barry? I'm glad that in my last meeting, I get to call on Barry. One more time, Barry. Unless you want to take a shot at it, Mark?
Oh, we're happy to share the drainage and engineering plans with the neighbor. We're happy to meet with them and discuss what went into it. We did a boots-on-the-ground survey, and then we use all the city's publicly available information and the software to generate the flood study. Sorry, drainage study. We didn't do a flood study on this one, but very large, public works.
Flood study, any of this required will be reviewed at the same time that the rest of the construction plans are being reviewed. It's just part of that same process. The way that they accomplish that is generally going to be a combination of on-the-ground survey, they'll pull some of the information off of topo maps. It's going to be, there's not just one set method to go about preparing that flood study, but it will be reviewed in detail as part of the drainage review and the construction plan review in our office.
But we'll exchange contact information, and we'll send him those documents. Saves him an open records request.
Yep. That's good. But at least it's good to know that the initial work is being done by the engineer for the developer, but then the city is also doing its own separate review. So I hope that that is satisfactory, but certainly, you know, call, you have my number too, to call me, and we can reach out to Mark as well. If there's no further, are there any other?
I just wanted to ask, Mark, when we were negotiating the application, did we settle on the operation of the aerobic systems? And if it was going to be administered by the HOA?
Correct. It was settled in that they don't have to be administered by the HOA.
I don't remember that. I don't, I don't recall. Do we have that in the zoning?
Well, we didn't do it zoning.
Offhand. I'm looking to Mr. McGoyne, who's saying, no, it should.
Give me, I'll pull up the plat real quick and check the note.
During the meeting, that was mentioned that an HOA would be responsible for that. You have to consider themselves.
But that would be in the zoning, right?
Well, there was no, this was already zoned R1.
Okay.
We can get back with Jared and go through the prior minutes, and if that's what was agreed to, we'll note it on the plat. I don't recall off the top of my head. It was several months ago. Do you remember? You don't remember?
I remember bringing, I remember the discussion, but I didn't know where it fell. That's why I just want to remember, and I didn't see a plat note, so that's why I was bringing it up.
If we need a TE to go back and review the minutes prior to council acceptance, that that be on there if that was agreed to at preliminary plat stage, we're fine doing that, but we'd want to check the minutes with Jared.
Let's do that. So then we'll add that, is that allowed? That TE would be acceptable prior to its acceptance by council? Because if it's not, then we could kick it back.
It's not really a condition on a, I mean, you can't really condition a plat, but I mean, he can agree, I guess, to, if that's what the minutes said, then they would put that on the plat. I mean, I think that's fine.
Yeah.
It's not really a condition, I don't think.
Sorry, we're getting down in this, but I'm worried if it's not specifically in the minutes does not necessarily mean it was not agreed to. We don't overdetail our minutes. If it was agreed to, it was agreed to whether it made it in the minutes or not, and now is our moment.
That was in the video. Yeah. That would be in the meeting. Yeah, we could review the meeting.
Yeah, we'll watch the video with Jared, and if it's set at the podium, whether it was TE or not, we'll bake it in.
That's what I meant. If it didn't make the written minutes, doesn't matter if it's in the video, there you go.
Because I know we have, we've got the note about the true preservation language, so we'll, if there was a note or agreement on the individual septic systems, we'll add it.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
But it was, Mr. McGoyne's saying, yes, it was. So we're good. To add the TE requiring that we look at the minutes and ensure that we've got the note regarding the HOA monitoring the aerobic septic systems.
Correct.
Excellent. Any other questions? Then I'll go ahead and Mr. Chairman, move for approval of C 7731 with the additional, with the listed TE's as well as the additional TE as read into the record.
A motion from Commissioner Pennington to approve the item. That's been seconded to by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes.
I'm sorry, I was going to second it. We got, we got, we got, we got.
It's going to be really fast, yeah. And they picked someone back and re-.
All right. Bear with us for a minute. We're making an adjustment. So the motion was from Commissioner Pennington. All right. And it's been seconded by Commissioner Powers now. Please cast your votes when available. All right. That is approved. Item three.
Item three is KC 7729, final plat of Braxton, Section 4, located north of West Reno Avenue and east of North Frisco Road.
Good afternoon. I'm Kendall Dillon with Crafton Toll, representing the applicant. This is the fourth and the last plat of the Braxton addition. I think there's 29 lots on 21 and a half acres. This is a duplicate of the preliminary plat that was approved here just a few months ago. I think there's four TE's that we're in agreement with, and happy to answer any questions and ask for your approval.
Awesome. Thank you. Commissioner Meek, this is Ward Three.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Do we have anyone signed up to speak on this?
I do not.
Okay. I reviewed it, and like Commissioner Noble said, I remember us putting that aerobic maintenance on one of these previously, and I can't remember if it was this one or the previous one. But with that being said, in looking at the lots that their aerobics would serve, they, you thankfully did big lots there, well over half an acre.
Yeah, somewhere over an acre.
If there's no other comments from any other Commissioners, I would like to move to approve with the four TE's as listed.
A motion from Commissioner Meek to approve the item subject to the technical evaluations. That's been seconded by Commissioner Pennington. Please cast your votes. And that item is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item four.
This is KC 7730, preliminary plat of Esperanza Gardens, and this is located north of Northwest 150th Street and west of North May Avenue.
Good afternoon. Mark Zizow, Johnson and Associates, 20 Sheridan Avenue. Before you, is a plat of a rezone that you recently approved. The layout matches the PUD. We agree with all the TE's, and we'd ask for your approval.
Commissioner Noble, this is your ward.
Has anyone signed up to speak on this?
No one has, not.
No one has.
No one has.
With that, I see nothing out of the ordinary with this. Agreed to all four TE's? Ready for a motion? I'd like to make a motion, recommend approval for C 7730.
A motion from Commissioner Noble to approve the item subject to the technical evaluations. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
That item is approved. Item five.
Item five is KC E 1141, application to close the public easement on Lot 6, Block 1 of Baker Subdivision, located generally east of North Woodward Avenue and north of Northwest
I'm David Tucker of Tucker House LLC. In 19, or December 6, 1923, Addis Baker, a single woman granted to the public the south seven feet of Lot 6, Block 1, Baker Subdivision. She granted it to the public for the purpose of a street. 102 years later, the city has not built a street across this piece of property.
They will.
On the bottom of the deed, it says, whenever the above described property is abandoned for the, by the public for the purpose of then said, the then said property shall revert to the grantor, heirs, and assigns. I pray that the council close this easement 102 years later. You haven't built a road there. That's my request.
All right. Thank you. This is Commissioner Goveen's ward, and he's not with us today. Anyone else want to, have any questions or comments? I think this seems pretty straightforward.
No. No one has signed up to speak?
No.
Then I will make a motion to recommend approval of CE 1141.
A motion from Commissioner Noble to recommend C council approval of the item.
Thank you.
I hit it.
See, now I did it. I thought I saw his finger hit the screen.
That was moved by Commissioner Noble.
I was sitting here thinking, Janice must have everything done, and then I did it. Jeremy's got us all moving fast.
All right. It's moved by Commissioner Noble. Seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. And that is recommended for approval. Item six.
This is CE 1140, application to close the public right-of-way for West Park Place between North Harvey and North Robinson Avenues, portions of the public right-of-way along Northwest 9th and Northwest 10th Street, east of North Walker Avenue, and a portion of the public right-of-way along North Hudson Avenue between Northwest 9th and Northwest 10th Streets.
Good afternoon. David Box, 525 Northwest 11th Street, here on behalf of the applicant. This is an application by Midtown Renaissance. They own most of Midtown. This is a cleanup of some encroachments that exist and some future encroachments that we know all exist to bring those buildings to the right-of-way, which is obviously what the guidelines push us to do in downtown. This did go before the, what is now called the DDC, previously the DDRC commissioned last week, and they unanimously recommended approval of this application. So happy to answer any questions, and we would ask for the same. Two TE's, we agree, Joe.
Thank you. Again, Commissioner Goveen's ward, with him absent anyone, any other Commissioners have questions, comments?
Anyone sign up to speak?
No one has signed up to speak.
With that, I will make a motion to recommend approval of CE 1140 with the two TE's.
A motion to recommend the item to city council by Commissioner Noble. That's been seconded by Commissioner Pennington. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
That item is recommended for approval. Item seven.
This is SPD 1726, application to rezon 13600 Memorial Park Drive from SPD 777 and Lake Hefner Parkway scenic corridor.
Mark Zizow, Johnson and Associates, 20 Sheridan Avenue. Before you is an SPD to rezon an existing SPD to allow for a new-to-market restaurant group that will be occupying the site. There's no TE's, and we'd ask for your approval.
Commissioner Noble, Ward Eight again.
Right. Anyone sign up to speak?
No.
No? Rezoning to a C3 base from a C3 base for a new restaurant property. With that, I will make a motion to recommend approval of SPD 1726 with the, no TE's.
Only question, do we get to say out loud what this is? Is it just salt in the paper?
It's not, it's not in the application.
Do we get to say it? All right. Looked to me like it was good news. It's right by my house.
We have a motion from Commissioner Noble to recommend the item to city council. It's been seconded by Commissioner Pennington. And that item is recommended for approval.
Thank you.
Item eight.
This is SPD 1716, application to rezon 13401 South May Avenue from PUD 1800.
Once again, David Box, 525 Northwest 11th. This is an SPD at 134th and May. It's for kind of general commercial purposes. There are two TE's, which we agree to TE1. TE2, we would ask to modify it to require, along the west, the distance required from property line to speaker for a fast food restaurant would be 100 feet, as long as the speaker is directed to the north, and there shall be 150-foot separation requirement from the north property line. That should be made, that should, that in addition to TE1, which requires a 20-foot continuous landscape buffer, ease any concerns. And then add a TE3, where we would remove the gas station uses included in the SPD.
Commissioner Newman, this is your ward.
Do we have anyone signed up on this?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Box and I discussed the speaker at length and also Councilman Hinkle. We decided that as long as it faced northward, the 100-foot buffer would be adequate. Actually, there's not a whole lot of decibel drop between 100 and 150 feet from the research I've done, so unless anyone has an objection, I'd like to go ahead and make an approval or make a recommendation for approval for SPD 1716 to city council.
Subject to the...
Subject to the three TE's as read into the record.
Yeah, the TE2 that the applicant read in and then TE3 that he read. All right, so we have a motion to recommend to city council from Commissioner Newman. That's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. And that is recommended for approval.
Thank you.
Item nine.
This is PUD 2062, application to rezon 16300 Southeast 52nd Street from AA.
Once again, David Box, 525 Northwest 11th. This is an application that would split five acres into two, two-and-a-half acre lots. We believe it to be consistent with the area. Staff does recommend approval. There are four TE's. We agree to TE's one and two. We would not agree to TE3 as it relates to sidewalks. This is in the interior of a neighborhood. The neighborhood's already developed. There are no sidewalks in this neighborhood. It's also not common to see sidewalks in a rural neighborhood. And then TE4, we would ask to strike. I believe Sarah has confirmation from Mike Wilson that he's good with striking TE4.
All right. Commissioner Privet, this is Ward Four.
Anybody signed up to speak?
No, sir.
No. All right. I think this is fine. The trees, kind of a concern, just because there's so many of them, but I saw staff's comment about, you know, splitting it in half. I don't agree with that necessarily, but keeping as many trees as possible, I would agree with, and I think that the maximum lot coverage at 30% handles that, so I'm good. Anybody else have anything to say about it?
Nope. We're ready for a motion.
All right. I'll move to recommend approval of PUD 2062 with the technical evaluations as read of one and two.
Striking three and four.
Striking three and four, yeah.
Okay. A motion from Commissioner Privet to recommend the item to city council, subject to the amended technical evaluations. It's been seconded by Commissioner Pennington. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
As recommended for approval. Item 10.
This is PUD 2064, application to rezon 10205 Northeast 63rd Street from R1.
Go to the area. Okay. David Box, 525 Northwest 11th. This is an application that would allow for an equine animal hospital. It's in an area that's fairly rural. There are two TE's. TE1, we agree. We will have gravel drive, but the approach will be paved, which is pretty consistent with, I think, the public work requirements. And then TE2, sidewalks. We'd ask to not do sidewalks. We are really kind of at the end of the city. Jones is just to our east. This is a completely rural area where there are no sidewalks for miles and miles and miles.
Commissioner Pennington, this is Ward Seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have met with the applicant. My immediate concern was about the neighboring properties, apparently the one to the west, excuse me, to the east is already some type of facility that's doing similar efforts, and the other is residential. No objections from neighbors that we've heard of so far, so I'll definitely talk to our councilperson, who will be voting on this item, to ensure that we've met with neighbors prior to council. No one got it? Okay.
I got it. I got it.
David, okay. But yeah, I'm in.
It's me yesterday. I didn't know if I could laugh as big as I did yesterday today.
Come on. I haven't voted yet. But no, I have no objections, and I'm ready to make a motion if there are no questions.
All right. I don't see any other questions.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend to city council approval of PUD 2064 and deleting TE2.
This means I get to bother you twice on all of these cases.
Wonderful.
All right. We have a motion from Commissioner Pennington to recommend the item to city council. And that's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And that is recommended for approval. Item 11.
This is SPD 1727, application to rezon 1004 Northeast 7th Street from R2.
Once again, David Box, 525 Northwest 11th. This is an application that would allow two duplex homes to be built on the site. If you are familiar with the area, there is a lot of density in the area. You've got multifamily to our, to our east, so it's in conformance with the area, in conformance with the comprehensive plan. There is one TE that we agree to. This is my last Ward Seven.
I was just official. I was just... I was just, I was just getting ready to say, one last time.
One last time.
Commissioner Pennington.
Do you want to fight about it? Do you all want to fight about it? I'm not even worried about this one, like... No, I've met with David, I'm in support. You know that the Page-Woodsen development is just south, so there is a lot of growing density. It's already R2, seems like a great thing for this area so that more people can live in our wonderful ward. So with that, I, for the last time, move, Mr. Chairman, to recommend approval of SPD 1727 to City Council.
We have one last motion from Commissioner Pennington to recommend the item to City Council. That's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes.
Do we like take a picture of the screen? Should I, I wonder, my wife's probably listening. Take a picture of the screen, Tori.
All right, I'll see you in six weeks.
And that brings us to item 12.
Item 12 is SPD 1721, application to rezone 432 Southeast 44th Street from R1.
We have a applicant present? Mr. Victor Pasada? No, okay. We will table that for the short-term comeback to it. Brings us to item 13.
This is SPD 1725, application to rezone 1210 North Ann Arbor Avenue from R1 and UC.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Fallon Brooks Magnus, representing the applicant. 733 Northwest 22nd Street. It's just kind of a housekeeping thing. There's a noncompliant use on the site right now, and we're just trying to do some cleanup so that they can, are in compliance. My, we have four TEs on this, and my only concern is the fourth one, which wants us to develop in accordance with the Hilldale UC urban conservation district. That would require sidewalks. And my only concern with that is, we're not redeveloping this lot or doing anything like that. My fear would be that that would, if they erect any kind of new structures on the site at all, that it would require sidewalk, which doesn't really make sense in this very industrial part of 10th and Ann Arbor, so. Was hoping to strike that, but otherwise, happy with the rest of it.
Okay. Commissioner Meek, this is Ward three. I'm going to lead our discussion.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. When I got my packet and I looked through this, I did read this one, kind of figuring it was housekeeping. To me, it's noncompliant because of the two residences and the storage units, and that's all they were asking for. And they're limiting it to the back 525 feet. So I grasp everything and understand it. And then I called and verified that with the applicant. The street view's not bad when you go by, because a lot of it's hidden in the back. But do we have anyone signed up to speak on this?
I do have signed one.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the neighbors first, and then I'd like to get some opinions from other commissioners.
All right, Mr. Ken Brown. Welcome.
Good afternoon, my name's Ken Brown. I own the two properties across the street. I own 1209 and 12, I'm sorry, 1211. In the current configuration, it's a property that's been there probably since the 1960s, maybe late 50s. The closest building is 250 feet off the curb. It's hidden behind a couple houses. I doubt if five cars go in there per day. I lived across the street for 27 years, and it's never been a disruption. So in its current configuration, I have zero problems with it at all. I want to make sure that in the process of changing the zoning, that it's not going to allow somebody to go in there, increase the capacity, where we get a lot more traffic, more noise, tear down the buildings, tear down the houses, where it becomes visible, and we end up with a commercial storage across the street. As I said, its current configuration, I have zero problems with it all. It's not disruptive. I'm only concerned about if the zoning change allows somebody to go in there, redevelop it, and modify it beyond what it is now. So if that's not the case, I have no problems with this at all, okay? But to the extent and degree that it would allow somebody to modify it and change it, increase the traffic, et cetera, I would oppose it. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. That is, you know, the million-dollar question on this one. Because as far as the way I believe the TEs to be written by staff, which they did a great job, but to me, it gives them the entitlement to that, his exact scenario could happen. And so I would, I'd like some opinions from other commissioners that possibly at minimum, for approval, adding another TE, then nothing else, no new structures could be built, or...
If it does, it's going to trigger building permits, and they'll be subject to the overlay at that point.
Well, one of the TE states that if they did, if they did build new structures, they'd have to comply with all the setbacks, per the zoning, which would limit, I believe, their ability to less than what they have now, on zero setbacks, so.
Well, so, we'd like you to weigh in. I mean, is the way it's currently written, would it allow redevelopment of all or both of the, of the tracts?
Sure, Sarah Welch, Planning Department. I think technically, yes, they could redevelop kind of how they already are. RT, and we thought about that regarding the personal storage, that the way it had been drafted or presented to us would allow, if those homes were to go away, that it could be mini storage up front or personal storage. That's why you see a TE for the 60-foot setback, which mirrors what the current home is at, and a limitation on the, we're proposing a limitation on where the personal storage use can be that is equal to where it currently is.
But could it, could they build more personal storage on that back portion?
I think they could, technically, yes. I think they technically could, and given the way the MDS is drafted. Regarding the setbacks, the proposal that came in, we couldn't confirm if, by approving the SPUD, that the buildings would actually still, that we were worried they would actually continue to be nonconforming, which is why you see a recommendation for zero setbacks for those buildings that are current. But if they were to be removed and come back in, then they have to meet the current code setbacks for the sides and the rear. The front would stay at 60 feet.
Not, okay.
Would, I'm sorry, would there be a way to limit, this is always difficult, I deal with it more in residential situations, but is there a way that we can limit the uses to what's there now? That is...
You could probably limit either like number of buildings or square footage of buildings for the mini storage. That might be one way to go. I think that if they were to remove the home or homes up front, I think they would be allowed to build one or two new homes up to the maximum allowed in the SPUD. But I hesitate to say keep what's there only. Maybe...
But we could find a way.
Limit the intensity of either number or square footage.
Okay, yeah, so.
That's kind of hard to do on the fly when we don't know the square footage, and we don't know, but, but, and...
Could I, could we just find, could I ask a question of why? Why are you rezoning this?
It's not compliant. And when you have structures that are not compliant, you usually have a hard time with financing if you have a lean against it or anything. And I think the owner's trying to do something like that. I'm not fully aware of what's happening. I just am rezoning it to be compliant.
And you'd laugh him out of the room at BOA?
Probably. And, and that's some of my concern. It's, it's a property that's surrounded by R1. Have a nonconforming use, just to rezone it so that it becomes conforming. In this application, as a land use, to me, is probably not the best use for the property.
I understand that, would agree, but to the extent of, in my time on planning commission, I don't remember us not, you know, I don't understand, I guess, for Director Butler to tell us that if we, if we voted no, recommended a denial, and this puts them on the radar with code enforcement then, and becomes a problem where eventually, things have to be torn down. I haven't been part of one of those decisions. I know it's a council decision here. But I, at minimum, would like to limit it to the existing structures as on-site now. I don't believe, we, that, my, my feeling is, is I don't believe, given them this commercial, personal storage use ability back there, I don't believe they should have the right to grow it any.
And I would also say that with the zero setbacks right against R1, I mean, it's, it's just such a variance to the current zoning, or even commercial zoning.
Right.
That, I could probably get a right way with storage of, you know, the RVs, the boats, and everything else that is mobile and movable. But to have building structure that's right on the property that obviously was not permitted when it was built, because they would have never allowed a permit to be placed there.
I will add to that, my lack of sympathy when the reason for needing to be in conformance is things like getting financing. If you build something that you shouldn't have built, then you might not be able to get financing on it. That is the ramification. So I'm having a little trouble just to say.
That's fair, but this has been in place longer than I've been alive. So that's kind of part of it. Also, the buildings being on the property line, we don't actually know that they are. They look like they're somewhere between zero and five feet existing. The TE doesn't allow us to build them back at zero feet if we were to tear them down. So it's, we're really not asking for anything new. We just want what's there to be in compliance. Because again, like he said, it does create a code enforcement issue.
Real quick, sir, yeah, that's tough. It just is, that could be the stated reason for wanting to be in conformance. But it also, if somebody wanted to tear these down and rebuild, what would they say? They would say, "We're just trying to get back in conformance, because maybe we need financing." Before Sarah maybe clarifies some things, where I am, Jeremy, what you're saying is that, when you're saying the existing structures, the problem is, if we need, if we need the exact structures, then we are requiring a continued dilapidation of buildings to the point that it could just be absurd, and we're not letting them. So if what you mean by existing, I think where we were is the size, maybe. No more structures, no bigger structures, no... It could be, maybe be improved, but not expanded.
Right, that's what I mean.
If we can get there, and I still might not, but if that was clear enough, then I could get there. Sarah, did you have something?
No, I'm so sorry, Commissioner La Forge, are you saying that they could rebuild them back, but not more than the, okay. And I'm really sorry just to think of this right now, but probably need to, for the mini storage use, the setbacks should probably be per C3. Sorry about that. It's, the base zone is R1 to, and allowing the personal storage use, so we would, we would have to go by the five foot, I think, for building back. If you're going to adhere to the base, the base zoning setback, it should probably be the commercial.
But C3 is zero, right? C3 up against R1.
Up against R1, yes.
Okay, I was about to say.
Unintended consequence.
Yes, yes.
Don't like, so.
I'm just guessing, we need to continue this case so that we can work out these details, come up with some language that's going to pass muster, and is specific enough for us to review. I, I can't vote to approve this as it is. I think it's, you know, these are so common, these existing uses that are problematic. Not necessarily as they sit, but, you know, if you, if you start institutionalizing them, then, you know, they get out of control, so.
Mr. Brown, did you have something to add?
Yeah, the current buildings, as I said, are probably built in the late 50s, early 1960s. They're corrugated roofs, they're wood buildings, if I remember for them as part, which means for fire code or anything, at some point, they would probably need to be rebuilt. What I would suggest is just to allow them to be rebuilt, but the same size, same capacity, but to be able to build them more as a fire resistant, because, and that type, you know, those are row buildings that are pretty long buildings. The, um... There's one building that's 340 feet long. There's one building that's 208, I'm sorry, 120 feet long. If a fire got started in those buildings, it would be a pretty substantial burn. So at some point, even if, you know, you allow them to be rebuilt in the same spot, the same size, same capacity, it would be a good idea to allow them to be able to update the buildings just from a fire standpoint, so.
Right, all right, thank you. So, if I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Powers, and it's, I understand TE number one would be changed to zero feet for existing structures and per C3 code for new structures. But if that's the case, then I believe your minimum setback would be 10-foot, correct me if I'm wrong, Bobby, 10-foot off the property line. Anything less than 10-foot would have to be fire-rated. And I understand his concern with the 300-foot building up against a residential property. If it lit off, it's big problems. And they are, obviously, weren't engineered, weren't designed correctly for today's codes. So... I understand, do you want to bring back with more information on the square footage? Are you okay with the deferral today?
We can catalog what's existing on-site and codify that somehow. I can work with staff to accomplish that. I'm okay with that.
And, and we're clear already that the buildings, should the homes be replaced, they cannot be storage, because it's already limited to, okay.
It's, just one... And I did, I did measure that. From the back fence to that fence behind the houses is exactly 525. And they wouldn't get any more square footage of commercial storage. I, I don't understand, this is me being fairly new. I don't, I had never even heard of the, the... UL, the, the overlay that's on this, the Hilldale, or whatever it was.
Urban Conservation District?
Yeah, but it's a, it's an older one. I don't know what, what those requirements would be if those houses were tore down. But obviously, there's some kind of overlay that would require the designation of the type of architecture of the new houses, correct? Or is it just sidewalks and lighting and driveways? Okay, well, I can find that out later, too. Yeah, anyway, I, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend a deferral of SPD 1725.
Did, did we determine a timeline?
Don't know.
Two weeks, is that, okay.
Luckily, Sarah doesn't have another thing she's trying to get done right now, so.
So that would be the 15th, May 15th?
Okay, yeah. Recommended deferral to May 15th.
Is that right?
No.
Eight.
I was pulling it up, I was trying to...
It could be the eight.
Eight.
Yeah.
Eight, eight.
Oh, of course, it would be one, too, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. That's right, so that'll be the May 8th meeting. All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Meek to defer this two weeks to the May 8th meeting. That's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. And that item is deferred. Item 14.
This is PUD 2059, application to rezone 17902 Southwestern Avenue from AA.
Good afternoon, David Box, 525 Northwest 11th, here on behalf of the applicant, who is Richard McCowen, who's also here, as well as Chris Anderson, who is the civil engineer. This was deferred from the last hearing so that we could have a community meeting. We were able to do that via Zoom a couple weeks ago. And since that time, we've spent a considerable amount of time spent a considerable amount of time with Commissioner Member Newman, as well as Councilman Hinkle, going back and forth on language. You may recall that two weeks ago, this similar item for the comp plan did come before you, and you voted unanimously to change the comp plan designation to lift the layer that was on it, to reveal the urban low intensity designation. Why that's important is this is an area in Oklahoma City that's going to be rapidly changing over the next five years when the turnpike comes in. The turnpike is currently slated to go along what is Indian Hills slash Southwest 179th with service roads. So think Kilpatrick, Memorial, that corridor. I-35 is just a couple of miles to the east, so this will be a massively changing stretch of Oklahoma City and Norman and kind of the all of the surroundings. So what it, Jerry, we go to the the most recent with all the green? There we go. So imagine if you can, if your head was tilted, left is north. One of the things that the neighbors expressed concern about was the proximity of homes to theirs. Now, when you if you look back at the aerial, what you'd see is neighborhood to the east is a neighborhood similar to ours. It's a kind of traditional, single-family R1 neighborhood. There are there is a neighborhood to the north that are larger lots. So what we have done is through Richard's kind of design work on here, incredible put an incredible amount of green space throughout the development, including a 50-foot buffer on the north as well as the east, anywhere where we are adjacent to existing, single-family residential. This should provide for adequate buffers, keep some of the trees that are existing to the north. We also have a big component of this that is commercial and multifamily. The commercial is obviously slated to go to the south. So Caitlin handed out a list of TEs. I'd like to spare everyone's time and not read them, but I'm happy to read them if you so desire. We do agree with the TEs listed in the staff report, of which there are three. And then what you see on the paper entitled Technical Evaluations for PUD 2059, this is the culmination of all the work done with Mr. Newman and Commissioner Hinkle or Councilman Hinkle. So again, happy to talk through all those if you so desire, but it should ensure that we have a development that not only is compatible with what's existing out there, but is forward-thinking and allows for what could be a very meaningful commercial development along what will be a commercial corridor in the future. So happy to answer any questions. Again, we agree with the TEs in the staff report and then would seek to add the 10 TEs written on the document you have.
David, could you give us just at least a Cliff Notes version of the of the TEs real quick?
Yeah, so, well, TE1 deals with, in the event that we have an issue with some of the commercial tracks, commercial land being taken, that we establish that there is a minimum number of commercial acres that will be developed so that if the turnpike were to come take a big chunk of it, we don't end up with just nothing but a single-family residential. We want to ensure that we have that meaningful commercial development on the the south end. TE2 is deletion of a couple of use units, the greenhouse and the hoop house. Then TE, well, the requested additional TE3 deals with lot widths and lot sizes. As originally drafted, I think we were at 4,000 square feet. We're now at a minimum of 5,000 square feet with some very specific language on the width. The TE4 deals with the dwelling units. So we do desire to have some ADUs in here. You'll notice that it's partially written and partially typed. So we went back and forth on how to administer that through a PUD on ensuring that we don't have an entire neighborhood of ADUs. What we came up with is that ADUs are only permitted on 20% of the lots. Sarah indicated that she believed that could potentially be a problem from a staff standpoint of tracking it long term. And so what we have modified it to is that TD ADUs are only permitted on 20% of any given block, which should help, I guess, in their internal processes.
Block, not lot.
Block. Huh? Block. Block. Did Caitlin write lot?
No, in Caitlin's defense, she wrote of the lots, and I requested something different. I think that we were I think we were talking about how staff could administer that more easier if it were at least a smaller, right? And so and as Commissioner Noble knows, we're we've been doing it this for home sharing, but any it says any given block, and I'm wondering if it should be any platted block? Is that okay? The ones that you received as a handout, mine is handwritten in because we just decided this.
This side of the room says block and this side says lot perhaps, but anyways, it's any 20% of any given block, which should help staff through processing in their in their process.
Looks like Caitlin's writing, too.
Yeah, it's definitely Caitlin's writing. So seven.
Real quick on that one. Besides that, how does that make it easier to track? You're sure the city can track that? This still seems very difficult.
I'm no. No, it was just the easiest way that we could come up with in order to in order to.
Because if you said 20% of the lots, you could have the density of the ADUs in a certain pocket and very dense, that block, each block is listed separately, and you can only have 20% of them. It spreads it out across the neighborhood. And again, I don't think you want a TE or even need a TE for the ADUs. I should thank you to just follow the ordinance. It's going to be an SPOD every time they do it, and you're going to have notice.
The doing it by block allows the the administrator to just look at just just those homes, you know, and whether there's any existing accessory dwellings on the block, which there likely won't be. It just makes it really easy. Whereas if if we had to buy the entire subdivision, they'd have to look at hundreds of lots and they'd have to set up a database, et cetera.
Got it. And then how would if a homeowner went to build an ADU, they went to when they go to get a building permit, then the city would check this 20% thing or?
Yes.
I wouldn't want a homeowner to build it and then it 10 years later find out, wait a minute, who built theirs last because the last one in was over 20%? So it would get caught at the time they went to build it and they would not be allowed to?
When they submit a building permit, then the plan review would check and see if there were any other existing building permits on that block, yeah.
Okay. Who's wanting this? I might be with Don. Who wants to limit to 20%? The applicant or the city or us?
Me.
You? Okay.
I do think it's worth pointing out, sorry about this because it's not about you, but you know, when you talk about blocks here, you're talking about the platted block. So it's a house facing this way and a house facing this way. It doesn't mean that if you live on southwest, whatever it is, 57th Street, that there might not be more than 20% of the houses that you're looking at, like per street. Most people think, I live on this block. They think about them and the people that live across the street from them, but it's platted block. So.
We're talking lot and block, right?
Yeah, we'll plot and block.
All right, okay.
Single-family.
I'll add with the ADU thing, like, I'm not objecting to the concept of limit to 20%. That is not my objection. My objection is I don't see how this is at all enforceable. This is not in the U M, so it's not subject to the existing ADU ordinance. And then two, at least as far as I know, so let staff correct me. But then two, this would mean that any any applicant in this neighborhood that wanted an ADU would have to go through the SPOD. So which one controls? The master SPOD or the one the one last one in, right?
This would allow it. We wouldn't have to go through an SPOD. This would allow the ADU, but limited to the percentage.
Okay, that was what I was not following. Okay. Interesting. Okay. But in that case, then I'm.
Right.
It still seems difficult to enforce, but okay.
Yeah. And that TE, I don't think that actually just allows you to do an ADU at 20%. You still have to follow the ordinance.
You know, the the putt, the the language of the master design statement is what allows the ADU. This is limiting language.
Last hopefully question on this, then. And then if somebody wants a platted block house 20%, if somebody else wanted one, they could still get it, they just have to go through and or would they just?
I guess they could rezone their property.
They could do a spud.
Yeah.
They could do a spud within the spud.
Spud of the spud.
But it would go to notice and public hearing and all of that. Don, is it is it just the presence of ADUs period that is troubling?
No, it's just the fact that this piece of property and where it's located is not in the urban medium, and then you're trying to just separate this one tract of property and bring it into the urban medium ordinance.
No, we're doing it outside of the confines of the ADU. The ADU ordinance is this own its own thing. This has nothing to do.
Yeah, you're just redoing the pud to match the ADU ordinance within the urban medium.
I'm not convinced the ADU ordinance gets passed.
And me neither, and I think there's a whole lot of reasons why there won't be a lot of ADUs in this neighborhood anyways, because of lot sizes and the lot coverage. But I just think that, again, if they want to do an ADU, they need to get SPOD. That's just my thought on that.
How many houses in this whole development?
Let's see, the plat's the next item, 489 single-family homes.
So it would be about 90, less than 100. To move on to the next one, maybe, and let these guys mull it. I'm going to be I'm going to be at the whim of these guys, but.
Don, you're you just want it to be anyone that wanted ADU would have to go and submit their own independent application.
Like anyone else.
The original application.
Not in the urban medium.
The original application was that all lots could have ADUs.
By right.
By right.
Yeah. If so, Bobby, when you said you were the one that wanted this.
If it if it met the criteria, you got to you got to bring that in.
That was because you were bringing it down from all to 20%, but you might be in favor of taking it all the way down to Commissioner Noble's to where you none unless they get us.
I was in favor of none.
Okay.
Originally. This was a compromise that we negotiated.
Didn't let me go back to then, who wants, does the applicant want more than none to be allowed by right?
Richard McCowen, RM Consulting. So the first time we added the ADU language to one of our communities was 13 years ago with a neighborhood similar to this, same land partnership in Norman. The ADU conversation came up in the in the process of working with one of the faculty members in the Architecture Department at OU, Lee Fithian. We were designing a a school integrated into the the neighborhood. That particular piece of land is in more public schools. And it was really, you know, some interesting ideas that came along, and she said, you know, you really ought to consider adding this. We did actually limit it at the time to only 10% because we ran into a thing with Norman where they said, well, you have to have a lot more parkland because you've effectively doubled the density. So just a little over a year ago, Norman passed their their ADU ordinance. There have been 11 permits pulled in the entire town. Norman just finished its comprehensive land use plan update. I had the pleasure of chairing the housing subcommittee, and as we're doing the numbers, trying to look at what what we need in terms of housing, 23,000 housing units over the next 25 years, we need 100 ADUs a year to be to be built in Norman all over town. When my oldest daughter graduates next month, we're going to be applying to build an ADU in our backyard because because it fits, it meets all the requirements of the ordinance. I live on a 8,500-square-foot lot, and my house is right at 4,000 square feet. And what what we've learned is the demand for the ADU is really about the like the boomerang child, and and it's about the mother-in-law suite. They're almost all being built for family members. And when you look at, you know, the whole intent of this community is to be able to design a community that works across multiple generations. And, you know, my daughter wouldn't be able to live in the neighborhood you grew up in. It's a lot of big houses, it's expensive, but if we build an ADU, she gets to live there. In this neighborhood, we've we've made a lot of effort to integrate the multifamily into the the retail and commercial so that, you know, you can take off and just go for a walk in this network of, you know, walking trails and all of these green spaces and be able to get to where you want to go. ADUs are really interesting, and one of the ways that we'll be monitoring this, the same way we're doing it in the Carrington community, has to come through the Property Owners Association. And of course, this is going to have a mandatory Property Owners Association. And so first, you're going to have to apply to architectural approval. And and of course, we'll be keeping track and go, well, okay, on on the top of the screen right now, I believe there are nine, well, each one of those blocks, I can't read it, sorry. So let's say there's 20 lots in a block, and so you could have four. We very quickly would be able to tell them like, hey, there's already four on your block, and and so we can't you can't have another, you know? But you could come and rezone it in the SPOD process if you wanted.
Mr. Chairman.
But ADUs in all practicality, we're not going to get one on every lot. It's just no way that it would happen because of the lot coverage ratio.
All very helpful. Mr. Chairman, I feel kind of strong on this. I don't always, I feel good about this. Bobby, I think I see why you came up with the compromise. I think it's, use my phrase, a compromise we can live with. I see why they were thinking about it. This unique green space, I think this is unique, right? I really like the look of this green space. I think they deserve to try this out here. It's on the border of Norman. It's I kind of like letting them experiment with this and give them more leeway than we otherwise would with ADUs, see how it's going. In particular, though, because if I'm looking at this right, most of these ADUs would be back towards the green space, is that right?
That's correct.
I think I see Commissioner Newman, why you looked at this a lot more than I did before. So I see why you got there. It can be enforced. It's I think you came up with good compromise with what you're proposing.
The other comfort I take, I agree with Commissioner La Forge, the other comfort I take in this is, I mean, neighbors are moving into this with the knowledge of what they can do. It's not like we are like our current ordinance where we're going into places where there are existing homes and neighborhoods. So, you know, I I think it's a good experiment, too.
So the only the only thing, the only other comment I would make about that, Commissioner Noble made a comment about, you know, as long as they meet the criteria, like if the ADU ordinance doesn't pass, there's not going to be any criteria. And I'm not saying that because I think the ADU ordinance ought to pass, as you well know. But I mean, if we're going to do that, then there's going to have to be a set of criteria that are developed and adopted. And this PUD won't come under that category because we're getting ready to vote on it right now.
Then it would just be Architectural Committee controlled by the.
Well, this is.
Setbacks.
Lot back, yeah, lot coverage, setbacks, so and so. But they're not going to be tailored to ADUs. I just want to be sure that we're not all thinking that we have criteria in place that do not exist because, okay. I actually think that it might be okay to do this, even though I'm not a big fan of sort of the blanket thing, because it, I mean, this is a PUD. I mean, this is this is one of the things that we where we do get to make those experiences. I suppose if we have specific criteria that we think need to apply to the maximum 20% number of ADUs, that we could, you know, build them in here, but I'm not sure we want to open that can of worms, but or you could agree to some magic set of ADU criteria, be it.
Like square footage maximum to go with accessory dwellings?
I mean, we get there through lot coverage and setbacks and all those and lot widths. And I mean, you you back into it through all the other developed regulations that are contained within the MDS.
Yeah, so I'm perfectly willing to be guided by your views on that topic because, you know, clearly, a lot of work's already gone into this, and whether it was focused in that direction or not, I don't know, so.
We're only on T number five.
Well, I was going to say, we spend a lot of time on lot coverage and setbacks and lot size, and so I think maybe we get got through that. It might kind of help. I have beat this to death, and I really am kind of wanting to hear public comments and hear your comments, which I'm glad to hear. But maybe if we kind of went through the rest of this stuff, you guys could kind of see the whole picture.
Yep.
So five was ADUs permitted on 20% of any given block. Six include under Section 9.2, all existing mature, healthy trees within the above referenced 50-foot landscape buffer shall remain to the greatest extent possible. And then in seven, we say that under 9.4, a six-foot decorative masonry wall shall be required along southwestern. If trees are removed within the 50-foot landscape buffer along the north PUD boundary line, a six-foot decorative masonry wall shall be required along said north boundary line. For lots abutting the landscape buffer defined under Section 9.2, there shall be a four-foot split rail fence or a four-foot Ameristar black metal decorative fence between the lot line and the landscape buffer. The decorative masonry wall and four-foot fence reference herein shall be maintained by the HOA. The point of this is to have kind of that split rail fence to have it delineate a property line, but open to that landscape buffer. Eyes on it is going to make it much better, it will be maintained in a safer environment. Eight, each single-family dwelling shall have a two-car garage. Garages shall be permitted to count towards one parking space for the required parking count. Nine, revised front yard setback in tract two to seven feet, maintaining that all garages shall have a minimum 20-foot setback. And then finally, 10, include language in 9.16, maintenance of the common area, private drainage, private drives and islands, medians, and walking trails, if any, in the development shall be the responsibility of the Homeowners Association. In the event of a walking trail, it shall be no wider than four feet and must be located In the event of a walking trail, it shall be no wider than four feet and must be located at least 20 feet from the northern property line. There should be a minimum of 40 acres open space within this PUD.
Do we have anyone to clear remove that at the...
No, there's no one signed up to speak.
Wow, that's kind of a surprise. Okay, and again, I'm kinda looking to you guys because we have spent a considerable amount of time. This is kind of a unique development, I think, in a lot of ways with the green belts backing up to the backyards. Richard has a whole discussion, we'll say, on having the house forward close to the street such that people can sit on the porch, talk to their neighbors, get to know their neighbors. Pushing the garages back, one of the requests I had was that we didn't count both of the garage spaces because, as we all know, everyone has junk in one space, and which they agreed to that, too. So, the neighbors to the north and to the east, we were all concerned about the proximity of the new housing addition and having a neighbor that close. Richard agreed to the 50-foot green space between both neighborhoods. The one on the north were much larger lots, and their concern was losing the trees that are naturally occurring along the north boundary. They've agreed to preserve those trees as a concession to those folks. And then we've went back and forth on setbacks. You started at zero, or two, one, something, was it five? Okay. So, the front yard setback, we've moved back slightly. And then we went from 4,000 to 5,000 square foot lots. So, thoughts, comments?
Are you willing to approve all of this as it stands? I mean, with these additions?
Mm-hmm.
Then, you know, I'm satisfied. I trust your expertise and your diligence, and, you know, I'm willing to take that chance with you.
I just wanna say a couple of things on it, then. Remember that 30% of this is gonna be commercial or office or whatever he said. And so if the turnpike takes property, then that commercial's just gonna move into the residential. So we need to remember that and understand that, which is probably gonna happen. And then, everyone needs to understand that the setbacks are seven feet for a front yard setback, 10 foot for a rear, and six foot for a side yard setback. So it's super, super tight. But, I mean, I can envision it now and see with the open fencing and how it's gonna look bigger than it actually will be, but it is gonna be very dense neighborhood.
You know, and I get that, too. I'm not a huge fan of that kind of density myself, that's why I live where I live. But I kind of can appreciate the trade-off. And there are a lot of people who like open space, but they don't want to maintain it themselves. They don't necessarily want it to be their yard, you know? And there are a lot of neighborhoods in Oklahoma City, in my ward, anyway, where, you know, there are these wide spaces between houses, but they're, you know, you mow them, you know? You don't do anything with them, they're just there. It is kinda nice not to look out your kitchen window and, you know, be able to wave at your neighbor at their kitchen window 10 feet away. But in terms of usable space, space that people are actually going to use and enjoy, I'm willing to, again, take the risk, take the chance, try it. You know, that trade-off between what's, separation between units and what's more common area.
So, I'd already said it, but now that he went through the rest of it, I agree with the chance. I think, I love what they're trying to do, love what you did to get these to the right compromises. It's some uniqueness, but I like, and I want to see it after it's done. I think it could be really great. I think Sarah was wanting TE five to be any platted block instead of any given block.
Yes, and so what I would say is that five will say, add that the ADUs are only permitted on 20% of any given platted block.
Given platted.
Avoid reading this word for word because of the clerk. What I am going to propose to do is I'm gonna hand Sarah Welch this document, which references all of the TEs you have, except I've now added the word "platted" block. It's dated 4/24/25 and autographed by none other than myself.
David, before you do that.
Yeah.
We were, a minor thing came up in the pre-meeting that I forgot to mention, too. Can we change the four-foot maximum width on the, I think it has to be pathway? We'll change it to a four-to-five-foot ADA compliant pathway.
On what? The walking trail?
Yes, it's, we can't call it a trail because...
Okay.
Some language, we need to call it a pathway.
So that's TE 10, no wider than...
A four-to-five-foot, no wider, no wider than five-foot.
No wider than five... Five-foot...
ADA compliant.
ADA compliant. Pathway. Pathway. Okay, I'm gonna now walk back over to Ms. Sarah.
And I'm gonna ask you one more, just for, just for the record in the public. You read in six through 10, word for word. Can you do that?
No, I didn't. I paraphrased. That's why I don't wanna, I don't want to have to read all 10 word for word. I paraphrased.
All right, it was, I followed. It was pretty close, word for word, but it was close.
So.
We're taking a photograph of this moment, just, we're all witnesses here.
I wanted to, I did want to say real quick that I was part of the neighborhood meeting. It got pushed to virtual, and there was a lot of people on there. And it speaks volumes that there's nobody here, because if I wouldn't have been part of that neighborhood virtual meeting, I would've said notice wasn't served properly or something. But there was a lot of people on there, and there's been, Commissioner Newman's done a lot of work on this.
And we did send them the revised pod and the revised exhibits. In fact, there was, somebody spoke against the comp plan change last time. We actually got an email back from that couple thanking us for the modifications and the beauty.
Okay, with all that said, I would like to make, I would like to propose a... I've talked too much today. I'd like to propose a recommendation to City Council to approve PUD 2059.
Don't propose it, move it.
I'll make a move, motion.
Subject to the, subject to the three TEs...
I'd like to make a motion.
Subject to the three TEs as written in the staff report and the TE document that is now in the possession of Sarah Welch.
Yes.
All right. A motion from Commissioner Newman to recommend a City Council approval of PUD 2059, subject to the technical evaluations and the document provided to the planning staff. That's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
That is recommended for approval. Item 15. Item 15 is KC 7721, preliminary plat of Western Hills addition located north of Southwest 179th Street and east of Southwestern Avenue.
Hello, David Box, 525, I did it, 525 Northwest 11th Street. That is my address. Here on behalf of the same applicants that were here on the last item. This is the plat. There are a handful of TEs, all of which are standard, and we agree to them.
Commissioner Newman?
I'm assuming we have no one signed up to speak.
We don't have anyone signed up to speak?
I did take a look at the plat, and I think it conforms. Did anyone have any other, any other commissioners have any comments on the plat?
My only comments are, why are we not connecting to the, I know we can't connect to the one directly east, but the one in the southeast?
We do.
Is that already, or do we? Okay.
Yeah, there's a stub right there.
All right, I just don't see it. Is that where, oh, okay, that's it.
Yeah, the development that's already built out there, he obviously did not provide a stub.
Yeah, 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 I'm good after that, that's good. I just didn't notice it, my bad. I sees it now.
Okay, with that said, I'd like to make a motion, unless anyone else has anything? Janice? Okay, I'd like to make a motion for recommendation for approval of C 77221.
Just so it's clear, this is approval, not recommendation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's a preliminary plat, so it's approval. So we have a motion to approve item from Commissioner Newman, seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes.
Thank you. All, congratulations. See you on Tuesdays.
All right, we're gonna go back and try for item 12 again. Did Mr. Pazadas arrive? All right. We just need to call the item.
Sorry. What was the number again?
Item 12, SPUD 1721.
This is an application to rezone 432 Southeast 44th Street from R1 to SPUD 1721.
All right. Hello again. Welcome back. Tell us what has changed since we last saw this.
Yeah, I presented the new plot with all the details that you requested, so I think that's, that's the way you want it, that's the way it's gonna look.
Okay.
So are there gonna be any lighting on site? I would assume at least two poles, probably. Lighting?
Excuse me?
Lights?
Well, the lighting is gonna be per code.
Okay, per code?
Yeah.
And what, Sarah, what is per code for... Sarah, you here? What's the code for lights on...
We're just talking about aiming them? Is that what we're...
Yeah, they've gotta be down-facing, right?
Sorry, one second.
Well, I mean...
Usually, we add more lights than what's required because it's a car dealer, so for safety and everything.
Right, that's my main concern, is the light pollution from...
With the residential to the south.
Residential right there to the south, yeah.
Okay, Sarah Welch, Planning Department. So spill light onto adjacent properties, measured at grades shall not exceed the following foot candles, so it's .2 foot candles when adjacent to a residential user district, and .1 foot candles beginning at 11:00 PM or 30 minutes after closing, whichever is later, until dawn.
All right, yeah, it's clear as mud. Got it. Foot candle.
Full cutoff.
Yeah.
One of the things that we sometimes do when we're concerned about proximity is bring it down to like the level of the height, yeah, to the eaves of a house, you know, so that it's not...
To limit to what, 12-foot?
Not 30-foot pole light.
Right, right, like 12-foot lights or, you know, something like that. Would you be amenable to that, to a TE just controlling the height of your lights? So they're not super high? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we don't want to bother the neighbors, you know, with lights, so that's...
Yeah, and that's the main thing I'm concerned about, so I just want to make sure that's clear. Okay, with this and the new site plan, I'm okay with it. I'm waiting for it.
So what height are we limiting?
I was just gonna say 12, 15 feet, but, you know, we're talking about it, you know?
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna vary.
What's the standard lamp post?
Usually...
16?
16's pretty short.
Yeah, I was gonna say 16, and I think is a common...
Okay, go 16, yeah.
I would direct it away from the residences.
Right.
I would just say that it meets, meets City Ordinance Code and no higher than, poles shall be no higher than 16 feet.
Okay. I will make the motion to recommend approval of SPUD 1721 with the added TE that lights will be two-code, but not higher than 16-foot and pointing away from any residential lots.
We have a motion from Commissioner Privet to recommend the item to City Council, subject to the technical evaluations and the additional technical evaluation. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. That item is recommended for approval. Thank you. All right, that brings us to the end of our individual items to be heard. And on to additional items, communications and a report, planning commission committees, anything?
My understanding is that the council's going to vote on the ADU ordinance on the 6th, I think? Is that right?
Yeah, slated to be back for public hearing on the 6th.
So there's an update for, they don't tell us the agendas yet, but there's at least an update from the ADU task force in that. At least something's coming soon. We'll know one way or the other.
All right. Planning Commission members, Commissioner Powers?
Oh, I was supposed to say congratulations to Commissioner Carrington once again. I'm so sorry to lose him as a colleague here on this body, but I know that he will be a great City Council person. So I feel like it's a net win for the, for the city as a whole, and I just, I just know he'll do a wonderful job.
We don't have a jersey to hang from the rafters, but maybe we can do a staff report or something, hang a staff report.
If we did, same, ditto, already said it, and we're gonna miss you.
Yep, have fun.
So the pressure's on to find somebody as good as you to sit in that seat, so.
All right, Commissioner Newman?
Good luck, and gonna miss you and all your good advice, so. But I know you're gonna share it with the council, so just find a good replacement.
Commissioner Pennington?
Well, I wanna just, first of all, I wanna say thank you to our staff, who does such a fantastic job. Like, I think it's so hard for anyone who just watches on TV, doesn't get the full experience that we get of watching our highly professional, highly dedicated, so caring, so passionate staff members that we have here. And so this city is so lucky to have wonderful people like you. And so I just, I'm so grateful for you. I appreciate you, I appreciate all the lessons you've taught me. I appreciate Sarah's had to take more phone calls from me than probably anybody, because I call Sarah all the time, as I'm like, "What about this? What about that?" You know, so Sarah, thank you for putting up with me a lot. I also want to just say thank you to all of you for the time that I've served. It has been really a wonderful experience. I want to give a special thank you to Commissioner Powers, because Janice, the first time I got on the Planning Commission, it was, I was brought on because there was an interim councilperson at the time who was the planning commissioner, and there were a number of Ward 7 controversial cases. And so they, he felt like we needed somebody. So I came in immediately to a bunch of cases that had, you know, that were really problematic. And so Janice walked me to every single community meeting, helped me deal with all the neighbors. I didn't hardly understand what anything in the packet meant. And so I just appreciate you and thank you. And Rusty called me and said, "Kamal, will you be vice chair of the commission?" And I said, "I barely know where the bathroom is," was how I felt about it. And I was like, "Why would you nominate me for that?" Was what I was thinking, but I was flattered, so I was like, "I guess I should say yes." I didn't know what that would really mean, but certainly getting the chance to do that has, was a joy. So thank you, Rusty, for believing in me. And then all of our colleagues, the ADU task force was a lot, was very challenging, but it was a lot of fun. And the reason why it was fun is because we have, we were all there with very different viewpoints. Obviously, we were still fighting about ADUs today, but we respect each other so much. And we are all different parties, we are all different ideologies, we all come from different corners of this city, but every time we came to the table, it was always about, "How do we make this the best city to live in?" That was all that our focus was. And so that is such a joy and so refreshing, especially as you read the news of all the things that can go on in our state and our federal government, that in this city, we use that Oklahoma standard and reach across the differences that we have to better serve. So, thank you. You're not done with me yet, so we're still gonna, so Commissioner Newman, I'm still available for advice, but don't get me in trouble with Councilman Hinkle. But I, but I really appreciate you all and thank you, and just keep up the good work.
And thanks. And thank you for your friendship and your guidance, and I hope to make you proud as you go on to your future endeavors. You did teach me a lot, and I do appreciate it, and look forward to that continued relationship.
Should've let Kamal go last.
I know, well, I was, I was thinking of that, it's kinda anticlimactic now, that's my, that's my bad, I'm sorry.
Instead of me, because they all said it. Enjoyed it, really proud of you, appreciate you stepping up to the council, so thanks. We'll be seeing you.
Yeah, and again, I just, I think I said it last meeting, but I can't say it enough. You know, I learned a lot. You are a tremendous leader and a voice of the people, and so I just, you're gonna have such an impact on this city at a higher level, so. For anyone that's interested, I believe the swearing-in is Tuesday morning at 8:30, and I am gonna do everything in my power to be there, so. All right, anything from planning staff?
No, well, saying hello to Kamal, I think I'll see actually more of you now, so, yeah. Hello, not goodbye, starting tomorrow, I think, so. That's all I have.
Okay. Municipal Counselor's Office? Nothing? Any citizens to be heard? Barry, any last? All right, with that, we are... All right. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you.